Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Say, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of United Search and Rescue America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see so many people in the audience tonight. And not all of them are staff. The first item on the agenda this evening is Consent Agenda. It's a group of items to be acted upon with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by City Council. I'll ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the Consent Agenda for discussion, and at that time either the public or our council member may request that an item be removed for Consent Agenda at that time prior to the council's vote. The items on tonight's Consent Agenda include the approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of January the 26th, 2016, approval of the expenditure vouchers for February the 9th, 2016, approval of a renewal beer and wine liquor license for Hong Kong Chinese restaurant. Is there anyone that would like to see any of these items? All right. In that case, may I have a motion?
Honorable mayor, I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented with the addition of $35,838.24.
Second.
Keel.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Butler.
Yes.
Sheek.
Aye.
All right, we have no presentations. At this time, are there any citizens that would like to address council? All right, seeing nobody come forward, we'll move on to public hearings, and the first public hearing is ordinance number 1206, series 2016. Mr. Green.
Councilman Mayor, this is the second reading and public hearing for the ordinance allowing outdoor dining in service of alcohol in city streets, sidewalks specifically. Nothing's really changed since the last memo. The ordinance is still the same, and the recommendations of staff are still the same.
All right. Since we didn't have a specific applicant for that, at this time I'll open to public hearing for individuals to make comments. Is there anybody that would like to stand and make a comment for or against this ordinance? All right, in that case, I will close the public hearing. And council, are there any questions?
I have none.
Okay, then may I have a motion, please?
Honorable mayor, I make a motion approving on final reading ordinance number 1206, series 2016, adopting outdoor dining and service of alcohol policy in a process for the Central Business District.
Second.
Archibek.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Butler.
Yes.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Sheek.
Aye.
All right, resolution number four, series 2016, regarding the Midas franchise. Ms. Conley, anything?
Good evening, gentlemen, mayor, councilors. I'm Niva Conley. I'm an associate planner with the city, and I am going to present to you resolution four, conditional use permit for a Midas franchise. The property is located at 244 East Main Street, which is right next door. It's zoned Central Business District and is currently an auto repair shop and a convenience store and gas station. As you've probably noticed, driving around, the gas station has been discontinued and torn down already. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit to discontinue the use of the convenience store and gas station and to open a Midas franchise. The project is running concurrently with a site plan review, which I'll be presenting next. The current structure is about 3,500 square feet. The applicant proposes to add an additional 2,000 square feet for a total of 5,400 square feet. The expansion meets all setback and lot coverage requirements. The land use code requires a CUP for auto repair shops in the Central Business District, and therefore the project must adhere to certain review criteria. The first criteria is that the project be compatible with existing and surrounding uses, and such compatibility expressed in terms of appearance, scale, features, landscaping, as well as control of impacts of noise, vibration, and smoke. The project proposes to update the stucco facade and with some blocked exterior. There's a drawing in your packets that shows what the Midas franchise might look like. The specific concerns to the nature of the business have to do with noise and vibration, possibly fumes and odors. It is going to be an auto repair shop, and there will be a lot of air equipment. The applicant has stated that all air-driven equipment will be state-of-the-art technology, and he does not anticipate any adverse impacts. I'm not sure I mentioned this, the applicant's Cody Dennison, and so, let's see. Currently, the property does not conform to parking requirements. The land use code states that parking only need to be increased incrementally by the building expansion. In this case, seven additional spaces. The project provides for 19 spaces, bringing the building into compliance with our parking standards. Landscaping is not required in the Central Business Zone, but the applicant has proposed 9.8% landscaping to buffer the business and increase compatibility with downtown. And he, the applicant, worked really hard to increase. He had originally proposed only 7% landscaping, and so he eked out another 2.8%. The site currently has two access drives off of Main Street. CDOT requested one access be closed off, and the closure is shown on the site plan. With the change in business, the applicant has estimated that the traffic will drop from about 120 vehicle visits per day to around 30 per day. There were no notable staff or agency comments related to the Midas conditional use permit. If council chooses to approve this CUP, the applicant will need to comply with five standard requirements. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
If they, if he's going to do a 9.8% increase in landscaping, which I commend him on, that's, he didn't have to probably go above and beyond to that point, but is that, will that be included in the conditional uses, the likes, under the approved site plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why not just round it up to 10, I guess? Why 9.8?
Um, that was...
I was just curious.
I think that's what he had to work with. If you look over there now, it's mostly just asphalt.
Right, yeah.
So he's expanded the landscaping around the sign, and he's taken up a parking space, and he's also put some landscaping in the back. So there's some buffer from the alley.
As a reminder, in the CBD, the requirement is 0% landscaping, but we had asked the applicant, because we're getting ready to update our land use code, and we will have a 10% requirement citywide, if they would attempt to meet that goal. And I believe that 9.8, because with drainage and parking and other configurations, that's as far as they could get.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, Senator.
I see Kelly in the audience. Is Cody here? I don't see him, but would you care to address the council at this time, or have anything to add? Okay, okay, all right. All right, in that case, I open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this resolution? Seeing nobody come forward, are there any additional questions or comments that council would like to make?
I have none.
All right, in that case, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve resolution number four, series 2016, approving a conditional use permit to establish a Midas franchise at 244 East Main in the Central Business District, CBD zone.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Price.
Aye.
Butler.
Yes.
Keel.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Sheek.
Aye.
Now we move on to resolution number five, series 2016. Hi, Niva.
Hi, Niva.
Hello again. I don't have much to add. I'm going to repeat for the minutes, so that we have it on record. I am here to present resolution number five, site plan for Midas. The applicant, Cody Dennison, has proposed a Midas franchise at 244 East Main Street. The property is zoned Central Business District and is currently an auto repair shop and convenience store. The applicant has applied for a CUP to discontinue the use of the convenience store and to open a Midas franchise. The current structure is about 3,500 square feet. The applicant proposes to add an additional 2,000 square feet for a total of 5,400 square The property is currently nonconforming to parking standards. The land use code states the parking only need to be increased incrementally. In this case, seven additional spaces. The project provides for 19 spaces, bringing the building into compliance above and beyond our parking standards. Again, though landscaping is not required in this zoning, the applicant has proposed 9.8% to buffer and increase compatibility with downtown. The site currently has two access drives off of Main Street. CDOT has requested one access closed off, and the closure is shown on the site plan. There were some engineering concerns, but the applicant has met our engineering requirements and has passed city engineer approval. This project was running concurrently with the conditional use permit, so without the approval of the conditional use permit, the site plan wouldn't be happening. I don't think I have anything more to add.
You've heard before.
Yeah.
Any questions, council?
I have none. Thanks, Niva.
And I'm assuming Kelly doesn't wish to stand at this time? All right, I'm now opening it again for community input. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this? Seeing no one, I close the public hearing, and if there are no other comments or questions by council, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution number five, series 2016, approving a site development plan for the establishment of Midas franchise located at 244 East Main Street in the Central Business District, CBD zone.
Second.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Butler.
Yes.
Archibek.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Sheek.
Aye.
All right, we have no unfinished business, so at this time we'll move on to new business with this venture.
Good evening, members of council.
Hello, Mr. Meacham.
Okay, okay. All right, look.
How are you?
All right, council member Keel, go ahead.
I am grand.
Get it out of your system.
I am capital.
I was thinking, should I start saying we are the champions or something like that?
Okay.
Honorable mayor, can I make a motion to...
Oh, stop it!
We just need to think about this item and move you to the end of the agenda.
I think so.
Oh!
We're not even going to have more than a word.
Well, you know 7A is my spot. All right, I will say this about the game a couple of days ago, because I know you want...
What game are you talking about?
You want me to grovel, so here you go. If you want this with enthusiasm, you're going to have to slip me a 10-spot.
A 10-spot?
They played a wonderful game, great defense. I was surprised the Panthers didn't put up a little more offense, but you guys beat them fair and square. Hail to the champions!
That was fun.
Hey, Russ, I found that...
That must have hurt to get out.
I don't know about the rest of council, but I found that speech a little bit deflated.
Try again, please.
Well, perhaps you would want to take some HGH.
This thing is devolving quick.
Your admirable, honorable mayor-ness, could we proceed with the agenda items so I can go home and grovel there? All right. Members of council, we have a land lease that has expired, used by United Search and Rescue, and they share the hangar that the land lease is located on with the Civil Air Patrol. The hangar was built 20 years ago with donated funds from the community. Various fundraisers were held. There were no public funds, to my knowledge, used in the construction of the hangar. So their lease has expired. They would like to extend the lease and go in for a 40-year lease, which is our new format. You're probably aware that United Search and Rescue and Civil Air Patrol are both, their mission is essentially benevolent and philanthropic, so Shane and I talked it over. The old lease called for a $20 a year payment, basically out of our pocket into the county pocket. We never even charged them at the direction of a prior city manager. So Shane and I discussed it, and he put forth that perhaps we charge them $1 for the entire 40-year, and I'll be at Steve's door tomorrow wanting that dollar. So that is, in essence, the nature of the lease. I mean, we're all familiar with land leases. In the last year, we've done several of them, nine to be, in fact, this will be number 10, that we've renewed for the 40-year period. So are there any questions of council on this? You're old habit this now, aren't you? Now that you got what you wanted out of me, you just want me out of the way.
Yeah, well, you are so astute. Are there any questions?
I have none. It's a great thing.
I think it's nice that the city's willing to work with these entities and recognize the service that they provide, so, but do collect that dollar tomorrow, please.
Okay.
They have the dollar here for him, if you want it.
Hey, I'll take it.
Seriously.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a land lease agreement with United Search and Rescue located at the airport.
Second.
Price.
Aye.
Butler.
Yes.
Archibek.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Sheek.
Aye.
All right.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
We've got him on in two weeks, so we're...
So you guys can plot my table today then? All right, the intergovernmental agreement with Monizuma County Clerk and Recorder, Linda.
Yes, the intergovernmental agreement is in front of you, that we could join with the county in preparing our election. I just wanted to give you some of the highlights that they do for us during our election. They offer the support for our judges, and they complete the training for them. Actually, I'm using five of their judges they used in November, so there are people that have been with them for years and years, so they already are mostly trained, but we'll go over our election as well. They provide the list of all the registered voters. They complete the electronic version of our ballot, send it to the printers, so that we can get the printer to print our ballots for them. They supply the equipment for our ballot count. They do all the counting. The judges will sit in their office in the county building, and we'll take them over in a locked box, and they will take care of them there. It won't be here in City Hall, but we will collect the ballots here. They also tabulate, and then we complete the canvas there. And today I asked Kim, because she hadn't really told us what that fee would be, and in the past we've paid from $1,500 to $1,800, and she's going to do the services this year for us, because we are going to be doing election as well as Mankas and Dolores, and she's going to charge us each $500 apiece.
All right, good.
So she will, I mean, it's just a wonderful service that they offer for us, and I love working with them. So I would appreciate if we could approve this intergovernmental agreement, and then next council meeting I'll bring the judges for their approval as well. Then we'll be all ready to go.
All right, any questions?
I have none.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
Madam mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Monizuma County Clerk and Recorder regarding duties that they will perform for the municipal election to be held on April 5th, 2016.
One second.
Butler.
Yes.
Archibek.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sheek.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
All right, the boundary adjustment plat for AMC Developing and the Monizuma County Shop Tract. Tracy, hi.
Good evening.
Hi, Tracy.
Hello. Well, this is basically a little out of the box. This is two unplatted parcels in the city. It's the county shop property to the north, and then the property to the south is owned by AMC Developing, also owned by Jim Candelaria. And they pretty much just want to do a boundary adjustment, so the end product will just be two similarly large parcels of land with a slightly different boundary. There was an underlying plat that had the right-of-way vacated, but otherwise they're basically unplatted in the area of this boundary adjustment. This is not going to be a separate developable parcel, and the plat does have a plat note stating that. And the county will, after this piece is sort of legitimized through this plat, will consolidate their property with this area of land, and kind of in the end, both tracks will remain unplatted. So it's the purpose of this plat.
The purpose of this plat is to have them remain unplatted?
Well, it's to convey a portion of land from AMC Developing to the county and kind of do it legitimately through the city.
All right, are there any questions, council?
I don't have any questions.
All right, in that case, may I have a motion?
Honorable mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the final version of the boundary adjustment plat for AMC Developing Limited Liability Company in Monizuma County Shop Tract plat.
Second.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Butler.
Yes.
Sheek.
Aye.
All right, the next item is the addendum to the city manager's contract. I got the city manager's contract. Do we get to do that?
Yeah, we're gonna.
And what we agree as a council is to offer Mr. Hale a 5.5% increase. Part of that, 2% of that is the cost of living, which every employee in the city receives this year, as well as a 3.5% merit increase. We are all in agreement that he is doing an outstanding job for the city and wanted to recognize those services by awarding him salary-wise. We also are offering an additional one week of paid vacation and have increased his severance should the city decide to dismiss him. Instead of five months, it would be six months severance pay, so that's the package that we read upon, and we'll be adjusting for his contract for the following year, and that will be retroactive to the date it is higher.
Thank you, your honor, and thanks, everybody on council. I just want to clarify that for the rest of, everybody else, their merit raise goes back to their anniversary date, but the, kind of the wage adjustment that we did was effective January 4th of this year.
Okay.
So I think, to be fair, and just so I'm treated like everybody else, I think it should be three and a half back to October 31st, and then 2% retroactive to January 4th this year, just so, you know, I don't give anything to nobody else.
Okay. We appreciate that.
What you talking about? Appreciate.
Would someone care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion. I was trying to find where I went, so I'm sorry. Okay, so madam mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve addendum two in the city managed employee contract with everything you just stated.
Second.
Did you repeat that, that you just...
With everything she just stated. No, I got it. You want my review?
The important thing is this Linda has us.
Do you have a Linda?
I do.
Okay, we got it then.
We will type it up and finish it tomorrow. Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Butler.
Yes.
Archibek.
Aye, aye.
Sheek.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Draft resolutions and ordinance, a draft resolution or a draft ordinance regarding the measurement of distance for liquor licenses and marijuana facilities. Mike?
One of the things that comes up, it seems every time we all sit down, we kind of sort of forget either how we did it the last time or different things come up. So we thought if we just quickly memorialized it, and it only has to be in the city code, because the land use code currently in place reflects to this section in the city code. And what we'll be doing is making the measurement process the same as what's supposed to be for alcohol from starting point to finish point. I learned this evening from some experts in measurement with wheels that I should take that out, because wheels aren't accurate, and that I should replace it with tapes. And this was from three different departments, three different department heads. They talked about going over a curb can do this and that and everything, so I'll replace that language, but this is just to make things consistent, so there's not a lot of these licenses, but when they come up, it seems it's long enough that we need to memorialize how we're doing this. It also makes it available for the public that's looking at doing it. They can look at the ordinance and say, oh, yeah, this is how we measure. What I also included, because it came up at this time, because we'll also put a similar part in the small liquor section we have in the code, is how we'll measure for liquor. And then it comes up every so often about the distance requirements, and I put that ordinance in. We're going to get that in the code as well. There is no measurement or distance requirement for the block north and south of Main Street, and I believe parts of Broadway. Previous council got rid of that, so that you could have dining on Main Street. It ran into some issues with some of the schools being on Monizuma, being within the end distance. So that was just informational. We'll put that in the code. It hasn't been... So that's what you'll probably get next meeting. Just wanted to go over it with you real quick. If you, we'll continue this practice until you tell me no. It's easier to do it this way than have a thing all set up for first reading and then...
And then not have it work.
And then not have it work, so that's why I'm trying to start bringing this stuff to you, a meeting before the first meeting.
So Mike, I just want to clarify, it is not changing anything as far as the distance totals, it's not changing anything except for how we measure, correct?
Right, yes, because sometimes we go, well, maybe we should put a pin in and do it, and then we should do this. So this is, Linda suggested this to the city clerk, because this is how liquor does it, and then we're consistent for all of these licenses.
And I take it word, every time we come up with something that'll change, we're bouncing it off our guys that are actually working on changing our code in the first place, right? So is this stuff...
We're not bouncing them off at first. We'll be bouncing it off them, and we'll be putting this stuff in the code. There's a few things, like the outdoor dining and this, that will be put into the new code, and I think we did a couple other things that, there may be some other things that you've approved that we'll put in there, I can't remember.
But you don't see any problem with those guys looking at this? But you don't see any problem, those guys looking at this and going, you know-
This actually isn't in the land use code, this is in the city code under licensing, and the only place it's referred to in the land use code says "Go to City Code" section for marijuana distances. So, I will try and keep that in there. Yes, this would be forever.
Just out of curiosity, when are those guys coming back?
They're gonna be coming, I think at the next planning and zoning meeting. Any planners here still?
March 1st.
Yeah, I think March 1st, the next planning and zoning.
Code rewrite. Right. We don't need a motion on this.
No, ma'am.
Since this is just a draft.
Thanks.
Alright, an additional light of a business is the extension of the Department of Civil Affairs Grant, EIAF 7575. I was gonna say.
I wasn't real sure who was gonna present it, so I didn't, yeah, I didn't know Mike was involved, sorry.
So, one of the energy mineral impact grants that the city has is on the land use code rewrite, Dole, quarter percent, this is $100,000. There's a 2% match towards that project. Our initial end date was 2/28/16. Then we said, "Okay, well, we're not gonna be done then, so we would like an extension to the end of the year." I think pushing this to December is, gives us ample room to get everything updated, without risk of running out of this money. So, it's pretty straightforward, staff is recommending that you authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment.
Are there any questions about this?
I don't have any.
We do need a motion for that.
I was gonna say, Linda, may I have a motion for-
Yeah, honorable mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment for EIAF 7575, which is land use code rewrite, to extend the grant from February 28th, 2016 to December 31st.
Second.
2016, second.
Archibek?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Keel?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
At this time, is there anybody that would like to speak to the council? Mr. Green, there's no attorney's report. It says no city manager report, but I know that's not always true, so-
That agenda is absolutely correct.
I just wanted to be sure. Do we have any committee reports?
No, I don't.
Yeah, I have one as well, please go ahead.
Alright.
I'm the Makeda Matt this afternoon. We went over a couple things, as far as the possibility that we do some research about maybe becoming our own nonprofit with the IRS, and the executive committee's gonna do more of a research on that and see if it's even plausible. Laura Lewis Marshino has been promoted to Region 9 Director, starting in October, as long as contractual stuff all go through. She's gonna be taking over for Ed, which I think is a good replacement. We're going to have our annual meeting in April, in Dolores this year, on, it's gonna be April 19th. We did some discussion with, about the World Jump Start Program. Tomas, and I can never pronounce his last name, kinda did a presentation about what it is, and what, how it would involve the Economic Development Committee. Really, it's, the way I understood this, Shane, and please jump in, fortunately Shane was there to listen to this as well, is it helps economic distress counties promote new businesses to come in, and they have to be a new business, and they have to have at least five or more employees, is that correct? And there's, to be able to become part of this World Jump Start Program, it has to be, we have to have a resolution from the county with some municipalities, and with some higher learning facilities on board. The higher learning facility, of course, would be, as for the city, municipalities could possibly be Cortez, Dolores, and Mankas, and then the commissioners have to be on board to bring this in.
Is there any kind of Region 9?
Yes, Region 9 is involved with it as well. What it does is it waives taxes, both county, state, and possibly municipality taxes for four years to help them get established.
Well, and it's business personal property taxes, specifically for the city and the county, and for the state, it's payroll. It's like any, I don't know about payroll, definitely there are, yeah, payroll taxes, or income taxes.
Income taxes, not payroll, income taxes. So, it's just, it's just another program to really help small businesses establish in depressed counties. And so, the Makeda is going to get a group of people together, and I think Tomas, Chelsea, and Laura, is that the group that you heard too? Is going to approach the commissioners to see if they would even be interested in bringing on board on this. The way I look at it, it's kind of a win-win situation.
Yeah, so the new business, they'd have to be from outside of the state. They'd have to be, or new here, that doesn't exist at all. So it's not like somebody could jump from Drango to Cortez and take advantage of it. It really needs to be somebody from brand-new to us, and never residing in Colorado.
And another thing I got out of it, too, is they couldn't be competitive with a business that is already established, so.
But that, uh, that kinda limits it, doesn't it?
It does.
Does that give it a?
It does.
Yeah, so it's administered through the State Office of Economic Development and International Trade. Everybody who applied for the program, they would be actually checked off by the state, so they'd make sure it meets their criteria. And it sounded like maybe it was a little bit loose as far as the non-compete. You know, if you got five employees, and there are people established, but they already employ 1,000 people, they're not gonna say, "Well, jeez, that's a serious threat to this big company." So, it seems a little bit loose, and they're just gonna kind of, you know, keep it a little fast and loose. I think right now Mesa County has five that they've sent up. Mesa County is the pilot county for this program. It rolled out from New York, it's called Jump Start New York, and I guess they've had a lot of success with that. So, it's just another tool, and like Sean said, it's, if we don't have the business now, you know, not getting business personal property tax for four years, we haven't really lost anything. We've got new jobs, and, you know, it's, we don't have it right now.
And then we kinda discussed our membership. They, what we're looking at possibly doing is, because we kinda feel almost to the point that we're competing with the chamber for memberships, so what they're kinda wanting to do is, is to just go in saying, "Okay, we're not trying to compete with the chamber, we're not trying to steal your members." So what we're looking at doing is maybe offering members that are already chamber members, like a 10% discount, new members, a 20% discount. I did ask about government members, and that has not been discussed, of course, so. But so we're, we're looking at offering some discounts to keep people at the door. And then Chelsea and Dave did a radio show on his program with KSJD that will be airing Friday morning of the Makeda. Oh, SBDC is offering a workshop in Monazuma County. It's usually offered over in La Plata, this time they're gonna go ahead and do it at the Welcome Center, from 9 to 2 on, okay. My notes in there, I'll have to get back with you, I won't think that is. I think it's February 23rd.
Probably not so long.
I think it's February 23rd, and it's for small business startup. It's February 23rd, I'm sure. I hate when I drop my notes like that.
2018, you guys got time.
I'm such a professional.
Thank you.
If you're interested, look it up. Alright, Ty.
Okay, Historic Preservation Board, Matt, our preservation day will change to May 21st. Monazuma Valley National Bank's gonna get a new plaque, replace the old one. And remember, that's the KSJD building, so they're gonna upgrade their plaque. There was some, I thought you were laughing.
You choked him up.
I didn't know you were so sentimental about plaques.
He's literally choking the dead over there.
See what we could do to get that plaque given to us, ceremonially, of course. Some discussion on the Calkins Building. There's a CLG inventory, color, government inventory. Chance that the Farview Visitor Center up at Mesa Verde might have a taker. There's an outfit out of CU that might be interested in becoming a tenant, or I don't know if there's a purchase as possible, but that'd be nice, 'cause that building's sitting vacant right now.
That would be for anthropology and research, awesome.
So, I don't think there's anything set in stone, everything's preliminary right now, but maybe get it filled up. This is gonna, this one's gonna really excite you, the Historical Preservation Board got new name tags.
You got one name tag now?
I don't, but they got one. I knew you'd be excited about that one. You know, and they wanna discuss maybe trying to get some of these displays of things they have stored into the new City Hall. And I couldn't give them any direction on that, because obviously, that's a discussion for everyone, but I know at some point, they'll be interested in entertaining some discussions about displays, and what could be shown in a variety of fashions at the new City Hall, I guess.
Right, and so, you know, Ty, I think you were absent at that meeting, when I went and presented and asked them if they'd be willing to do that, to just stage like different, you know, we don't have a museum right now, but I think in that gorgeous new building, we could have a lot of places where we kinda display, and just kinda have a walking gallery. So, you know, some of them are owned by the Grand County Historical, which a lot of our members are members of that, so they seem really open to it. And I just said, if you guys could kinda let us know what has historical significance, I mean, it looks like a typewriter to me, I don't, I don't know, you know, so, anyway, so.
Okay. Looks like Monazuma Park on the city registers is gonna become a possibility. Looks like there's a chance that one Historic Preservation Board member can go ahead and re-up. That's about it, talked a little bit more about the historical district, boundaries and such, can always be a little bit fluid, and other than that, that's about all we discussed.
Any other, got any means? Our work session tonight, we had an update on the trip that Brick Smith, Shane Hale, and several members of the council took to Santa Fe to get some solar information regarding Jetstream Energy Technologies, and we spent a considerable amount of time discussing that. And then we adjourned into executive session and discussed it. We had three different executive sessions to discuss pending issues. And that's all, does anybody else have anything?